Yeah.
Yep.
One nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome.
Thank you and welcome.
I'd like to call to order the regular board meeting for the Oceana County Board of Commissioners for Thursday, September twenty eighth, twenty twenty two. And I am to do a roll call.
Mr. Erickson, Mr. Morris, Mr. Beggs, Mr. Hardy, Mr. Walker.
Here.
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 I ask for a motion of two minutes from the September fourteenth meeting.
How make that? Make that motion, Harvey.
Do we have a support?
Actually, I probably should, since I wasn't here. Oh.
Do we have a support? Do we have a support?
I'll support that one.
Moved by Mr. Hardy, supported by Mr. Morris. Are there any comments or corrections on the minutes as presented?
All in favor, say aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Conflict of interest is going regarding agenda items.
Or any board members have a conflict of interest with any of our agenda items?
Hearing none.
Hearing none.
Changes to the agenda.
Changes to the agenda.
At the pleasure of the board.
At the pleasure of the board.
The resolution for the statewide septic system.
I would prefer to have Mr. Erickson do that because he's on the district and health board. And if Mr. Morris, if you would do the board canvassers, please?
Are there any other changes to the agenda?
The resolution number twenty-three dash ten rather than twenty-three dash oh nine.
Twenty-three dash ten.
Twenty-three dash ten.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If it were my may ask, where did we get the number ten?
That's an awful low number for a resolution.
It's a resolution, not a motion.
Pardon me?
It's a resolution, not a motion.
Okay, there you go, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, uh. Approval of the agenda?
Approval of the agenda?
Make a motion to approve.
Moved by Mr. Beggs, supported by Mr. Morris. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comments?
Public comments.
Public comments.
We have any public comments at this time?
Steven?
Steven?
Welcome.
Welcome.
Little bit of a glitzco.
Little bit of a glitzco, we're gonna work through it here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I tell you how appreciated I am of being able to use this sign. Um, the purpose of me being here is to offer the public an opportunity to comment on some hazard mitigation information. Typically, I would use the regular LEPC meetings for this purpose. However, due to some timing, um, we were able to coordinate with the Board of Commissioners. And so I appreciate that very much. So this is important, uh, step in the hazard mitigation planning process. Um, we noticed this in the paper. Uh, and I, the, all the communities were notified by email that this was happening as well. So all these communications directed folks to the Windsor Dick website, which has, which is, uh, the link is in these notes. Uh, it has a number of items for review and draft, sections of the Oceana County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Uh, but I'm just gonna briefly go through my notes and, uh, at the end, I will pass around this contact sheet. If you have any questions, feel free to call me. I absolutely, or I can call you. Happy to, to talk about this at a time when it won't take up so much of everyone's time. So. So. Hazard mitigation plan, the Oceana County Plan, it was originally approved in, what did I say, two thousand five or two thousand six? Updated in two thousand ten, and we are in our third iteration of updating. Uh, it's supposed to be updated every five years. Uh, and basically, ideally, the planning process increases coordination and overall community resilience and resistance to hazards, natural hazards. That's the, that's the focus of the Hazard Mitigation Plan. Uh, the plan also includes other types of technological and human hazards. Uh, but we do that to kind of facilitate a well-rounded, emergency management, uh, framework. So, the, the requirement is natural hazards for the purpose of this plan. Um, and doing this plan, having it approved by FEMA will, uh, make the county eligible to apply for certain types of FEMA mitigation funds. Pre-disaster, which are competitive, and post-disaster, which are made available following a federal or presidential disaster declaration. So, uh, having this plan in place allows the county and all the local communities that also adopt the plan to apply and access these funds. One caveat is that the local, the plan is set up in a multi-jurisdictional format, so that each community has profiles within the plan. And they're allowed opportunities to participate. And then that, after they adopt the plan, the county's plan, by simple resolution, then they can qualify. But if they don't participate in the planning process, that may be jeopardized. So, um, I've done a lot of work to, or actually Troy and I have done a lot of work to reach out to local communities. And we've only had a few that have engaged. So, at this, at this point, I would say less than half of the, of the communities would be eligible. If, if they, if they wish to. So, um, that's another caveat, is that most of the communities, small communities, aren't going to need this or want this. So, it's, uh, I don't expect one hundred percent participation. But everyone is offered the opportunity. Uh. So truly? So truly, um. That's one, that's one, just introduction that I wanted to provide. Um, and then also, offer an opportunity to send anyone in the public who's here to discuss hazard mitigation? No. So.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
So why wouldn't the township, even though they might reuse it, how much work is it for them to be part of this? Be part of this? It can't be that much, Phil Austin.
No, it's a phone call. It's a response. It is very, it's a very low bar. The bar has changed a little bit. Has changed a little bit. Originally, um, in other versions of the plan, they had to submit a letter indicating that they support the plan. Uh, but now, uh. To my understanding, um, per advice from Michigan State Police, um, a little more engagement needs to be documented. More than just a letter stating that they, they want to participate, they need to actually engage a little bit. So, the bar has, has been raised a little bit.
That engagement could include just their participation in overviewing the plan?
Yeah, just reviewing some sections, saying it's okay.
Most of them missing the point, just getting why they wouldn't do that, be able to get into some launch costs.
Part of the reason is, I'm Stephen Carlson from Windsor Dick. What's Windsor Dick? Who are you? I don't trust you. There's so much turnover locally, so that's a constant struggle that we face. So, I try as much as I can to work with, through, with and through Troy, because he's a local face and a local representative. So, we try to mitigate that a little bit. But it's a constant challenge.
You attach that to it, and everybody's really interested in it.
Sure.
Till you want their help and money.
Sure. So, there's, there's no financial cost or, or, uh, responsibilities attached to participation in adopting the local, adopting the plan locally. After the county adopts a plan, and it's approved by FEMA, uh, Troy and I will support Troy. But we'll go around to the communities that participated and secure those local adoptions. So, there's a little bit more work to do after the plan's complete.
What is the, so where are we at in the state? Because I think we could, maybe we could help with our individual townships to garner that support. Is that, is that window over now?
No, the window is not over. We have a few more weeks. The plan has to be adopted locally before December fifteenth, when our grant performance period ends. So, we still have some time prior to, to the plan adoption, to secure participation.
Steven, coming from that sector. Herein lies a political problem. They need to be kept in the back of the minds when they're going out and talking to people. When we have villages inside Oceana County. You can't go to the township, the township, the township to know what the villages need to do. Whether it's a township fire department or anything else. If it's a village, you have to deal with the villages, because if you don't go to the villages, they're not gonna buy into it at all. And I've seen that. We used to have, when I was a village president, we had a group where village presidents met, you know, quarterly. And it eliminated a lot of those problems and stuff like that. Nothing happened anymore. But we have to look at grassroots.
Mr. Morris? Yeah, if I could add to, so if you're gonna do that, too, that would be awesome. If you wanna add to that, too, um, master planning process as well, we're, we have, we've got very little feedback from townships on that as well. So if you're talking to your townships that you represent, you can throw that one in there, too. They just have to look at the, the plan that Steph and sent them and say, yep, that's where our, that's where our map still looks. Our future land use map still looks that way, or doesn't, and this is, this is how it's different. That'd be great.
Before this, before this, uh, time period, to have the local units of government submit their, you know, to be part of it and submit their comment. Before that time period, I think Troy, if you had the information on who has already addressed it, who has not. But the ones who have not, why don't you get a hold of the commissioner who covers that area? Would that be okay with the fellow commissioners and make, you know, so we don't get any surprises later they didn't let us reach out to them?
We have documentation on who we reach out, and we did reach out to the villages separately from the townships. So that addresses that concern ahead of us.
That's not the appearance on somebody's, on different.
Well, yes, so we had the documentation, and they received that information where they acted on their claim. So we did separate and identify each individual political entity. We just didn't leave a village inside a township they were actually contacted individually.
So efforts will continue.
Yep, great.
I think with that, I welcome any other discussion, but I'm going to pass this around. If you want to have a one-on-one with me, if you have any other questions, please feel free.
After you, as you're working to the final, final, uh, uh.
Plan?
Plan? And everything, I think it would be nice, um, if you could come back to the board, you know, and tell us, you know, where we're at with it. And, you know, and, you know, what it is, because even sitting right here, it was interesting when you said it's primarily natural hazards. You know, natural disasters, you know, the primary thing. Information is, you know, you know, is worthwhile to have, so.
So, it's a very in-depth, there's a lot of, a lot of information, and so it, it.
An overview would be nice. An overview would be nice.
Yeah, I could, I could, I could, you go. But you could get a taste of it by going to the, the website and accessing some of the information that's already up there. And I could take that hat off and put on another hat. I have, I have two more hats. I'm gonna take too much time, but I am helping the Planning Commission, we're updating the master plan right now. And, uh, that's on, on track, and as Phil said, that we are working with, um, the Future Land Use Map. We're also working to incorporate the housing study that just completed and released, uh, discussed yesterday. Um, so we're going to talk about how to incorporate that into the master plan. Uh, we've got, I would say, three to four more months before the master plan will come before, actually, we need to back up. You got one to two more months before, uh, the Planning Commission will request that this body approves the master plan for public review. So that's gonna be the next time you probably hear about the master plan. Then it goes through a sixty-three day review period, and then we'll have another public hearing. And then we can, the Planning Commission will, will see about approving, and then it'll come back to this board for adoption. Um, I'm also working with Parks and Recreation Commission to update the recreation plan. And that's on track for completion in, uh, January. It has to be done by the end of January in order for the county to be eligible to apply in April for state recreation plans. So that's on track. One other thing to update on is the White River Economic Impact Assessment. Has anybody heard of this? So the White River Watershed. I don't know the acronym. I don't know the acronym. The White River Watershed Body. Basically commissioned a study through Grand Valley to assess the economic value and impact of the White River to communities in Newago, Oceana, and Meskeen Counties. So, that was something that Windsor Dick stepped in and was the fiduciary for, because the White River group does not have an official, uh, organization. So, what I did was I went to the three community foundations, I secured about twenty-two thousand dollars to commission the study. And we turned that over to Grand Valley to conduct the study over the past year. And, uh, it's been probably sixteen months or so. Um, and so that is actually available, it hasn't, we haven't done a press release yet, but it is posted on the Windsor Dick website. And. Grand Valley is scheduled to give a presentation to the White River Committee in December. And so, uh, working with Julie Burrell in Newago County to put out a press release. There will be more information about this, but just to let you know, you can get a sneak peek, it's actually developed. And so it has, like, some monetary valuations of how, how much money, uh, just, the river provides to the economy, the local economy, to jobs. And, um, it, they get quite detailed in the study, but they also summarize it pretty well, so it's, it's a bite-sized, there's some bite-sized information, so. They're gonna use this to, uh, evaluate, uh, environmental projects. This, this, this study's gonna be like a benchmark for improvements and changes over time, so that's good. Um, they can also use this information to, uh. Demonstrate the value, the existing value, and access, um, funds for environmental and economic projects. So, it's, it's a good project, so it was something that Windsor Dick did at no charge, so. So, yeah, thank you so much.
I think you brought up a good point, when you brought up all the White River Watershed and the other projects. And for myself, it would be nice, at least annually, at any time, you know, in between, that you had the opportunity to come in, just to teleboard what you're working on in West Michigan, what you're working on in Oceana County. We don't, you know, we see so many things that we approved and slipped through. And, you know, sometimes we don't appreciate all of the help that we're getting from the outside. And if you had the opportunity to come in, just give a short address, you know, address on what you're doing, so.
Thank you, Steven.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the gentleman? Thank, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for rushing in.
Appreciate it very much.
Any other public comments? I was told that nobody shut up.
Just by lunch, that's better. Just want to stop, say hello. Uh, today is normally a session day, but it was canceled yesterday, so I thought I'd just stop, get as many meetings I can, see what's going on. Uh, you mentioned grants a few minutes ago. Pay attention to what's coming up, as far as outdoor recreation grants, road grants, because all those will be coming up again. Make sure you stay in contact with Marie in our office, she can fill you in on what grant, if you're looking for something in particular, she can walk you through the process, get letters of support. And we can also talk to the directors of the department, so. If we're ahead of that, it gives us a little chance to maybe talk to the department heads and the folks in charge, so. If you, like I said, let us know, we can work together, because we don't ask for it or get it here, money's gonna go somewhere else. The more we work together to do that, the better off we are. Other than that, just want to stop, say hello, never hesitate to call, you know, I have my cell phone number. Call the office on anything, if you need letters of support. I was at the MTA meeting here last night, kind of the same thing, just keep a line of communication open. Thank you.
John, I would just like to make the comment to you, and thank you. I read last week, all of the at-risk pension systems in the state of Michigan, that there were, and the amount of money that was budgeted and extended out so that people can still get their pensions, even though they're at risk. You know, it's something that we should have never got ourselves into, you know, but thank you, and thank the state for helping these at-risk. Uh, there's a lot of amazing how many there are, as you well know.
Lots, lots of them. A lot of those politics over the years.
Yeah. Or the one that you know that I'm aware of, the sale of a hospital. Delight had their own hospital, they couldn't afford to have it anymore. And they had sixty employees who were under the MERS system. And they went to a private sector, and there's no more funds coming in, but the state is assisting with that, so, thank you, John.
So your letter to, uh, statewide system, Representative VanderWaal and I have both opposed to a statewide policy. Uh, we think it should be done at the local level, between the county and district, Health Ten, and I believe everybody's on the same page there. What works in one part of the state doesn't necessarily work here. You need to make that decision here at the county level, not at the Lansing level. You have our support.
Thank you for being here, John.
Thank you for being here, John. Thank you.
Thank you much.
Are there any other public comments?
Are there any other public comments?
Mr. Erickson?
Mr. Erickson? Resolution number ten, oppose the statewide septic system.
Chairman Walker? Chairman Walker? I present resolution twenty-three dash ten, opposing the changes to the statewide septic code, which are hard. House Bill forty-four seventy-nine, forty-four eighty, Senate Bills ninety-nine and three hundred. Whereas, the Board of Commissioners of Oceana County, Michigan, does hereby find as follows. Whereas House Bills forty-four seventy-nine and forty-four eighty, and Senate Bills two ninety-nine and three hundred, would amend section twelve seven fifty-two, and add part one twenty-eight to the public health code, and establish state and local standards for onsite wastewater treatment systems, which would require the Department, Michigan Department of Environmental Quality, to develop a statewide code to govern the installation, operation, and maintenance, inspection of these systems. Whereas the amended act restricts and removes local controls and changes existing in regulations and guidelines that have been effectively enforced by counties and health departments across Michigan. And whereas, the amended act would add additional mandates that would increase the amount of personnel time and health departments would incur under the new act, without adequate funding from the state. And whereas, the amended act would gut existing regulations and grants the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality to approve local sanitary codes, which in effect eliminates local control and undermines the duties of local health departments to implement and enforce laws. And whereas, the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality lacks the necessary budget and staffing levels to meet the mandates of this am mendatory act, which will place additional burden on local authorities. And whereas the creation of the State Technical Advisory Act would take away and replace local control of the design, permitting, inspection, and management of onsite wastewater treatment facilities, and limit input into the rulemaking process to four local health department representatives. And whereas, the am mendatory act fails to address funding for distressed homeowners and vacated properties with onsite wastewater treatment systems. Now therefore, be hereby proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners of the County of Oceana, opposes House Bill forty-four seventy-nine, and House Bill forty-four eighty, and also Senate Bill two ninety-nine, and Senate Bill three hundred, and requests the state legislators to oppose the legislation. Hereby certify the above true copy of this resolution adopted by the Oceana County Board of Commissioners at the time date and place specified, above, and pursuant to the required statutory procedures.
Do we have a support?
Do we have a support? That, will I support that, Morse?
Moved by Mr. Erickson.
Moved by Mr. Erickson. Supported by Mr. Morris. Any other discussion? Any other discussion?
Roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Beggs?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Mr. Beggs?
Mr. Beggs?
Proposal?
Proposal?
L?
Uh, L?
Proposed L twenty-nine thirty-nine.
Forty-twenty-nine setting, uh, twenty-twenty-two millage rate.
Number twenty-three dash ninety-nine.
Mr. Chairperson, I'd like to make a motion to approve the L forty-twenty-nine as prepared by Oce, uh, by the county's equalization director setting the twenty-twenty-three tax millage rate, uh, at a total of nine point seven four nine nine mils.
Support?
I'll support, I'm sorry, Mr. Erickson, you support that?
Moved by Mr. Beggs, support by Mr. Erickson. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Glad you caught that, please.
Glad you caught that.
Glad you caught, I'm reading.
Glad you caught, I'm reading, I'm going, hold it, hold it.
And the specifics of those are broken down in, uh, enabling documents. John, we'll have a copy for the media that, you know, if you want the specifics.
Send me the bag, it's probably in there.
Thank you, thank you, thank, thank you. No other comments?
No other comments, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Beggs?
Yes.
Mr. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Morris?
Mr. Morris? Board of canvassers?
Canvas supporters.
Canvassers? Canvassers, appointment.
If I may, can I ask the clerk first, if it's any different than what's written here? Okay, thank you. Chairman, I'd make a motion to appoint Ms. Erin McGregor as the Republican Party Representative, and Mr. Bruce Varshen as the Democrat Party Representative to the Board of Canvassers Board, for a four-year term to commence on November one, two thousand twenty-three, and expire on October thirty-one, two thousand twenty-seven.
Do we have a support? Do we have a support?
Thank you, Mr. Beggs.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Moved by Mr. Morris. Any discussion? Any discussion?
I believe.
Do we need a roll call for this?
The appointment?
The appointment?
All in favor, say aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passed.
Motion passed. Mr. Hardy? Brown Field Redevelopment Appointment.
Mr. Walker, uh, as a motion to reappoint Mr. Danny Powers and appoint Mr. Thomas Osborne to the Brown Field Redevelopment Authority for a three-year term to expire on September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six.
Do we have a support?
Do we have a support?
I'll support.
Moved by Mr. Hardy. Moved by Mr. Beggs. Support by Mr. Beggs. Any discussion?
All in favor, say aye.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Opposed?
Motion passed.
Motion passed.
Mr. Hardy?
Mr. Hardy? Amendment of claims.
Uh, Board of, as a Board of Approval of the Council Payable and Release of Funds for nine twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, ambulance fund fifty-two dollars and thirty-seven cents. Uh, Shelby Township Community Park Fund total one hundred seventy-four thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ninety-two cents. Indigent Defense Fund total forty thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. Uh, our fund total fifteen thousand four hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-four cents. Department of Veteran Affairs, eight thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and ninety cents. Technology and Innovation Fund, two thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seventeen cents. Building Department Fund total seventeen thousand eight dollars and seventy-seven cents. For a general fund total of four hundred eighty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-five cents. The grand total of seven hundred forty-nine thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Thank you, Mr. Hardy, do we have a support?
Support.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Hardy.
Moved by Mr. Erickson. Support by Mr. Erickson. Any questions or comments?
Roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote, please. Roll call vote please.
Mr. Hardy?
Mr. Hardy.
Mr. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Beggs?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
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 Reports and commissioners?
Reports and commissioners?
Mr. Morris?
Mr. Morris?
Oh, we've talked about a lot last few days. And had a lot of activities. Um, been a very busy week. Been a very busy week for all of us, I think. Um, I guess one thing I'll point out, we had a Windsor Dick meeting, Tim and I on that board. And we just approved the five point nine million dollar, uh. Budget for next year. Um, one of the things that Erin talked about at that meeting is hazard mitigation plan and kind of their frustration with the federal government. Uh, the roadblocks, it seems to come up with, they'll, they'll. Guidelines about what needs to be in the hazard mitigation plan. They'll write them within those guidelines and then send them on to the Fed for initial, um, acceptance. And then they'll have all these changes that need to be made. They're just, their hands, their hands are getting tied, and they're getting frustrated, it costs more money to do that, so. Um, that's, I know that's one thing that was brought up besides, you know, a handful of other things, so. Yeah, that's, I think that's all I got.
Part of that frustration was they were essentially the same plans. Boilerplate across the board and depending on who reviewed them.
Right.
Was, uh, kicked back with a whole bunch of revisions, and the next one was accepted without issues.
I think it's the housing study, the presentation was yesterday, and that was, that was really good. Um, really interesting stuff. That's now going to be on the county website, I don't know if it's been published on there yet, but it will be, sounds like soon. Um, so that people can access that. But Patrick Bowen, he did a really good job. He presenting, I thought. Um, he was presenting for about an hour. And just had some really good, I mean, he knows his stuff, you can just tell, he knows his information. And what his, um, the staff that works for him. Sounds like he said they're really good at, at digging and finding the information that they need. For, to be able, you know, put up accurate, put up accurate numbers, so, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Mr. Morris.
Mr. Erickson?
Mr. Erickson?
Um, we've done an initial inspection of the Crystal Valley Dam. Tiffany and I, and he's coming back in a week to do a little more. Study of the dam. Study of the dam. Do a little probing. Get a little better grip on what problems we might encounter with that dam. Good meeting last night. Very, very good. I kind of enjoy going to these MTA meetings because we get to see a lot of. Township officials at these meetings. At these meetings and they're better attended every time I go. The content's richer, there's a lot more discussed. Very, very good meetings. It was in Golden, Tim's territory last night. A lot of things were on the table that are a problem with all this. Septic code was the big one. And I'm glad we'll be able to take that tomorrow to Cadillac. To Cadillac, District Ten will have that conversation. Very much so. Very much so. Otherwise, no. Otherwise, no. Things are starting to quiet down a little bit. The deer are, officers are all busy. We're no longer able to yard deer carcasses up like we have in the past. Um, Department of Natural Resources won't let them. Happens, so that's why you're seeing so many animals on the side of the road. They're leaving right lay on the side of the road now, and that just creates more hazards with buzzards and eagles and every other animal that wants to compete on a carcass. But, uh, I know our sheriff should mention last night, obviously they have been with car deer, so, yeah, be careful. Block from mids aren't used like they have. The farmers aren't able to. Get rid of the animals like we have in the past. It's just turned into a. Tremendous problem. Tremendous problem. Hunting isn't what it used to be. Harvest isn't what it used to be, but there are a lot more babies. No.
Thank you, Mr. Erickson.
Thank you, Mr. Erickson.
Mr. Beggs?
Mr. Beggs?
Uh, just echo, uh, to attend the housing study presentation yesterday morning. Uh, it was a worthwhile time. I think it was a worthwhile expenditure from this board to fund that study. It will be useful in a lot of different ways for quite a few years, so that was good. Learned a lot of.
Learned a lot of things.
Learned a lot of things, uh, a lot of stats and a lot of interesting facts. Uh, so that was, uh, that was good, good to see that. Hopefully be put to, put to work by a little bit everybody. Investors, uh, business opportunity ventures, uh, who knows? The sky's the limit, but it's data that's available to everybody, so, um. Other than that, it's probably a bunch of season, we're all aware of that, and, uh, working through that, so, that's all I have.
Mr. Hardy?
Mr. Hardy? Yeah, you're right. Seems like we were just here the other day.
Weird.
Uh, just a little bit to report, uh, we had a nine-one-one, uh, board meeting last week, Wednesday. Uh, we're still moving forward, uh, towards completion of encryption, which is still off in the future. Uh, again, because of the radios that are required, um, before that can be done. Not only the PDEs, but the fire departments and everything has to be up to, up to date on it. Uh, there's a little conversation about, again, about the Lake Michigan, um, communication effort to try and resolve that on the shoreline for. Um, and again, the director up there is, is working on that, other than that, I don't have anything else to report.
Thank you, Mr. Hardy.
Thank you, Mr. Hardy. Mr. Hardy, I've always wondered, I've been very aware of, uh.
The problem we're on.
Problem we're on, on Lake Michigan. And I've wondered, how many black or gray spots are there actually in the state of Michigan like that? You know, the towers have, the towers are all owned by the, by MSP or the public service. And it'd be nice to know, population-wise, how many, I'm sorry, residential structure-wise, how many there actually are. And I bet that's one of the higher ones in the state of Michigan.
I'm sure it probably is, well, even in, uh, you know, when you get out to states like Colorado and stuff where they have loans and stuff. They have systems that are in place to take care of that. Unfortunately, Michigan, the state of Michigan won't allow some of that here. Uh, I know that they're currently working on, uh, I guess I call it the push-to-talk.
Yeah, there's some new technology that uses wifi that basically uses wifi to talk over portable radios. Uh, and so they're looking at using some emerging technology to overcome that gap, but it would work the same as our regular, as we wouldn't know the difference. But it requires wifi access, so part of making sure that there is wifi to those lake shore communities. Analyzing, be able to have their own access just for emergency services to be able to do things, so that's where the technology's at right now.
Is that not correct, Mr. Bowen? Even, uh, eight hundred megahertz pagers that we went through with the fire department, they still back that up on their personal phones?
I, they use a secondary learning system for that, it's a backup, which is.
Because there is, the fire partisan is going to get the eight hundred megahertz pagers.
The cell phone won't work, but the pager does, so most everybody carries that type of technology, it's called active nine-one-one, it's a software for that.
Thank you, Mr. Hardy. Thank you, Mr. Hardy.
And also I'd like to add.
And also I'd like to add that both Elbridge and Crystal now have TruStream, which is just fantastic.
You know, to have Crystal Valley wired up now. With wifi and with TruStream is just tremendous, so.
I, I have nothing else. Do we have any other public comments?
Any other public comments, John?
Anything for us?
No, sir.
Then we stand adjourned.
Then we stand adjourned.
Stephen, thank you for staying here.